Okay, student report. Welcome.
Hello. Yes, hello. All right. Good evening, everybody, and nice to see all of my fellow students here. It happens a lot, but today they're being honored and congratulations, everybody, on your achievements. So this weekend, we had a lot of things going on. First of all, we had junior prom, and I heard a lot of people had a lot of fun, as usual. Also, the STIR program went to SIT, as well as a lot of our younger members of this district, a lot of the younger students. And it's safe to say that we did really well, because almost every student called up was some sort of Ramapo Central or Suffolk High School, and it was really exciting. In that, saying that, we have our symposium next Thursday, and everybody is invited at 5:30 in the library, especially board members. I'd love to see you guys there and talk to you about my research. That is next Thursday at 5:30. We've had cultural month activities this whole month, and there's different rooms set up during lunch, and you can go inside and learn a little bit about another culture. A lot of food. This Saturday is the ACT, and next Tuesday, English Honor Society and Social Study Honor Society will have their induction ceremonies. A lot of students have been working really hard, getting their points, so we're going to honor them. The 16th, we have the instrument petting zoo, so if students of the younger students in our district can kind of get a feel for what instruments they might be interested in taking up, possibly into high school. The band bonanza is on the 18th, and the string extravaganza is on the 19th. So a lot of music, a lot of science, and other fun things. So, thank you so much. Have a good week.
Great, thank you. Okay, with respect to 1.08 minutes of the regular reading from March 15, 2016, Chair would like to take a motion to accept those minutes as so stated.
Okay.
It will be Clark, second.
Second.
Craig, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Any questions? 1.09 minutes of the special meeting of March 29, 2016. Chair would like to take a motion to accept those minutes as so stated. I believe we're ready to review them.
So moved.
Thank you. Craig?
Second.
Maureen?
What a time.
Well, Maureen, second. Discussion? Come on.
I just would like to see the names of the people on the panel on these minutes. At least, I know we can't have the whole conversation, but at least the names of who served on the panel would be appropriate.
Would you like to, you want to move to amend those, Amman?
Yes, please.
Okay, so let's have a motion to amend said minutes, or to add, I'm sorry, I just wanted, Angela, you're getting the language, to add.
The pan, names of the panels.
Right, the names of the panel. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Oppositions? No? Okay, so with respect to the amended minutes now, Chair would like to take a motion to accept those minutes as so amended. I mean, I'm sorry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Very good, thank you. 1.10 superintendent's comments. I believe we have.
We have recognition of students this evening, two groups of students, and I'd like to start off with, I think she's in the back of the room, with the Academic League, there she is.
I'm here. So for those of you that, I don't really need this microphone. So those of you that don't know, our Suffolk High School Academic League team continued as county champions this year. This is the second time that they've won the county tournament, so they won both the regular season and they won the invitational that Suffolk High School hosts every year in March. So we're here to recognize them, so I have their names. I'm just going to read them, I don't know, do you have, do you want me to do it, I don't know if their names are on there, you want me to do it that way? Okay, in alphabetical order. So Alex Angeles. Matt Falco. TJ Bornkoff. Will Cabral. Jeremy Domlin's not here. Stefan De Creppen. Sahil Dudd is not here. Michael Fernandez. Brooke Greenstein. Harrison Muniz isn't here. Michael Pelletier's not here. Brandon Puffett's not here. So we get to Katie Sadoff. Juliette Van Sheik. And last but not least, Mark Wolf. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Again, great to see all the students here this evening. I will be calling out this evening the National Merit Scholarship Award winners this year. For those of you that don't know, the National Merit Scholarship Awards are a national competition based on the performance of students on their PSAT exams during their junior year. This evening, we have two groups. First, I will introduce our National Merit Commended students. These students finished within the top 5% in the country of the 1.6 million students that take the exam each year. So again, a great achievement. I'd like to call forward, if you're here, please come forward with your certificate. William Adwar. Raheem Desai. Carly Eisen. Brooke Greenstein. Ashley Kim. Cameron Martel. And Juliette Van Sheik. You guys get the whole picture, that's. Next, I'd like to call forward our National Merit finalists. These students finished within the top 1 to 2% of the 1.6 million students that took the exam last year. Jeremy Domlin, who I know is not here. Michael Fernandez. Eugene Haas. Emily Lu. Catherine Sadoff. And Sayang Woo. Just one other bit of trivia, just also happy to say that Suffolk High School had the most finalists in the county this year. So again, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frin. Always great, congratulations. Thank you. Okay, we're at the public participation, 1.11, public participation with respect to action items. Only those are items number 2.01 through 2.14? 1.3? Sorry. This session will last 30 minutes, three minutes per speaker. If you could please approach, I say that every time, approach the podium. Say your name, school affiliation, and once again, these comments are just for those action items which are affiliated behind. Don't be shy, I believe it's, really not soft. Okay, so for those who have remained, again, please just step up to the podium, and again, your comments, please pursuant to policy, don't discuss any one personnel or student of the district. Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. Okay, these are, now we have action items. Is there any items before I use, you can send a general, any items that need to be pulled?
Come on. 2.13 and 2.05.
2.13.
Sorry, 2.13 and 2.05.
2.05?
Yep.
Okay. Teresa?
2.07 we're pulling.
2.07, yes.
Talk to Dr. Brown, we'll discuss it next week at the meeting to get some questions, answers to some questions that we still haven't finished yet.
Policy meeting that we have next week.
Yes. Yes, reminder, policy meeting.
All right, so Angela, we're going to pull 2.07? Sorry for that. Okay, Marlies.
Can you please pull 2.06 just to clarify?
2.06? Okay, okay, so with respect to the items that are so remaining, we have 2.01 through 2.04, 2.08 through 2.12. Chair would like to take a motion to accept those action items as so stated.
I'll make that.
Clark? Second. Teresa? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Sorry, my mic is broken.
Any questions? Okay, with respect to 2.05, Chair would like to take a motion to accept 2.05 as so stated.
So moved.
Teresa? Clark, second. Any discussion? No discussion. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, please.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Come on. Thank you. Okay, 2.06, Chair would like to take a motion to accept 2.06 as so stated. How do you say, Clark?
Sounds good.
Okay, Teresa? Second. Any discussion?
Yes, please clarify the change that's made.
The change to the calendar that's made was switching April 18 to January 2.
So April 18 was a snow day previously, and now it's a school day, so we're left with three snow days. Is that adequate?
Dr. Adams, you think, is that, her question is left with three snow days?
In the last few years, it's been adequate, yes.
Except for that one crazy storm in October. That was something different.
What happens if it's not?
Then we look at our superintendent conference days, March 10, and see if we can swap that day out for another one, and then, you know, theoretically extend school. Like if we had a superstorm, Sandy, where we missed five days or six days in a row, like we had to do three or four years ago, then that's kind of what we did. We used our superintendent conference days, and I think we extended the school year by one day.
How is this going to be out to parents for someone who we're?
Posted tomorrow. Right?
Any other questions? Were discussions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. 2.07 and 2.13, Chair would like to take a motion to accept 2.13 as so stated. Clark?
I'll make it.
Teresa?
Second.
Any discussion? Come on.
Thanks, so I, this is actually connected to 2.05 as well, but I think we have two discussions. I urge the board to please consider using the same criteria for reimbursements for conferences as per the regulations, as well as our policies, our standing policies, instead of voting differently depending on the conference, who's going, et cetera. I think that we should be uniform and pretty much use the same criteria every time. There's, there are regulations that are already in place that we should utilize. Obviously, we should look at our budget and stay within, you know, voted amounts of money that we have at our expense for conferences, and stay obviously fiscally responsible. There are already regulations in place, as well as district policies, that we should not attempt to change or alter.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just to say that I support what I'm on this side, we should all be treated when it comes to conferences.
Any other discussion? Oh, Teresa, do you want to tackle that here, policies, please?
I already wrote.
Oh, okay. They're good. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppositions? Abstentions?
Hi.
Okay, 3.01, information items.
Correct.
Okay, 4.01, replacement of Suffolk High School turf fields. Yes, Dr. Adams?
Eric, could you slide up there for me? Just want to kind of summarize where we've been in terms of looking at the replacement of the fields at Suffolk Middle School, I suppose. And, yeah, there's no doubt that we've been through a lengthy process. It started last year, and immediately after the proposal failed in May, subsequent board meeting on June the 2nd, we established a framework that we would follow in terms of moving forward and trying to analyze the approach and come, arrive at a good decision. On that June 2nd, the framework, which has been revisited a number of times since June 2nd, we talked about health and safety considerations, usage, and also the cost. What you see up behind me is the cost, and I suspect some people are taking a look at that. I've tried to stay true to this process, this framework that was established, because all eight of us, the seven board members and myself, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers in terms of the cost, the utilization, the safety, and also, more importantly, to our students. Part of the model that I used on this was the evidence-based decision-making model, which was at, most recently shared by NISBA at their conference in New York City in October. And within that process, they suggest that we look at four different items as we go through an evidence-based decision-making process, i.e., first, taking a look at using scientific research or research-type articles as a starting point for our evidence. Peer-reviewed articles would be the best, but on this topic, there were very few peer-reviewed articles. Secondarily, it would be taking a look at organizational-type evidence, and with respect to organizational-type evidence, we're looking at data within the organization, and part of that would be the utilization of the fields. And as been shared before, we have about, roughly 2,000 hours a year are used, or our fields are used, roughly 2,000 hours a year. The third area to look at would be experiential, taking a look at experts. And we tried to have that in last Tuesday at the public presentation, and that also subsumes a little bit of the fourth area that NISBA has suggested, and that being, excuse me, stakeholder input. With respect to that, I've received 14 emails regarding the turf field replacement. Had a number of conversations with parents, students, teachers, and coaches. A lot of coaches have voiced their opinion on this. And so trying to keep that as the basis of a model, we've trudged through this at times, and I think that we've learned a lot about the fields. I've learned a lot about turf, about crumb rubber, about organic infill, about, you name it, with respect to these fields. I've learned a lot, and hopefully others have as well. We do have multiple users on the field. It's not just our athletes that use the field, our band uses the field. And I've spoken to some of the older coaches, more senior coaches, maybe retired coaches, and they shared with me pictures of the field before the turf was in, and it was kind of a muddy mess, which is not conducive to those marching around in the field. We, our students, of course, at the middle school, use the field for physical education and for some other activities. The younger children at Montebello also use the field, the fields at times, not as extensively perhaps as the middle school, but they are also users. And then, as we've heard before, Ramapo Valley Soccer uses it with over 1,000 students participating and using the field. And then there's a number of other organizations that use the field. We have heard from our athletic director, Andy Goutioni, regarding the logistics of the field use, and we're, you know, trying to rotate teams through, and start times, and, you know, considerations like that. We did talk a little bit, or have learned a little bit, about the consistent playing surface when you use synthetic turf versus natural grass, and the impact that weather has on that. The, currently on our website, we have 71 articles that are posted with respect to synthetic turf. The most recent one was sent to me by Dr. Sarah Evans from Mount Sinai Children Environmental Group, and that was posted within the last couple of weeks. Using the language from the study that I shared on March 1, the federal government study, they said limited studies have been shown, limited studies have not shown an elevated health risk from playing on fields with tire crumb, but the existing studies do not comprehensively evaluate the concerns about health risks from exposure to tire crumb. There are a lot of concerns that people have expressed at the public presentation last week and over the course of several months, both in a board meeting setting and in person. And with, so with respect to those concerns, and taking a look at the, how we have some very young children that go and play on those fields, I think it's important, and to narrow the options. Mr. Long on March 1 had narrowed the options in a certain way, but I think it needs to be limited further, and I would be prepared to recommend to the board tonight, although it's not an action item, so they cannot take action on it, but in terms of my recommendation, my recommendation would be to replace the synthetic turf fields with synthetic turf, with the infill being organic. And more specifically, the organic infill would be the coconut cork blend. If you look at the slide up here, the Envirofill, that's considered organic, but that's mainly sand-based, although sand comes from two different mines throughout the United States, and the sand is very rounded. You heard Lee Defritus last week say it looks like marbles, and they don't compact very well, but, you know, it's sand, it's a little bit harder, it's a little bit more expensive. The second area is the one that I think that we, as a school district, should focus on, and that would be the GeoFill. The GeoFill, excuse me, is a ground-up coconut husk, not the meat inside, but the shell and cork. The presenter from last week had, uses a 90% coconut, 10% cork. There are other combinations, and there is even an organic infill that uses rice husks or rice shells, okay? But with the GeoFill, I think you heard last week, for those that were in attendance, talked about the GMAX. The GMAX, the standard currently is 200, our fields are, meet the 200 standard. But that standard looks like it's going to drop to 150. One field would make it, the other field would not. And the GMAX is basically the impact of one's head, there's a scientific way to do this, dropping a certain weight from a certain height. But the lower the GMAX number, the better it is in terms of safety with respect to concussions. So our existing fields are anywhere from 147 to 156 to 158, somewhere in that range. Any of the three options would drop the GMAX significantly, and looking at the three different options, the GeoFill with a GMAX of 100 is the best so far. There have been some tests on the GeoFill as low as 94. I've seen some as high as 106, 107, but it seems like the average is around 100. But even at 107, that's still a good number. When looking at that infill, the, there's some care that has to be taken with that infill. It will dry out, so we're supposed to, in order to keep the warranty, the, try to keep the moisture content between 30 and 40%. Part of it is, if it gets dry, it gets hard, and then the other one is, sometimes it just, it gets really dusty and it'll blow away. The, the nearest school to us that has this product installed in their field is Pleasantville. They've been pleasantly surprised at the performance of the field. They, they have made some suggestions to us in terms of upkeep of the field, at least for the first couple of years, to use the installer to come and take care of the field at least for two years, meaning this, when the coconut husk will get compacted. And so part of what we have to do is basically rake it, it's kind of like brushes, and it breaks it up a little bit, so it softens it a little. But we've got to make sure that we use the right equipment, we don't want to tear the field, and we want to do it a proper way. So they, they've recommended to us that we should use them the first couple of times that we try to do this. There are some questions that have been presented. I'm speaking tomorrow with Dr. Sarah Evans from Mount Sinai, and we'll attempt to have those questions answered, and when they're answered, we'll get those posted and share those, you know, of course, at the next board meeting. You know, some of the questions have been about the compaction, how hard does this get? Does it float away? Does it blow away? It's coconut, so if you have a nut allergy, will you be impacted by it? It's coconut, so if you have a nut allergy, nut allergy, will you be impacted by it? Quick answer is no, but if you have a tree allergy, because it is from a tree, you know, that question needs to be answered. And in speaking, in communicating with Dr. Evans, she indicated that she would address my questions tomorrow afternoon. So my intent is to send her the questions in the morning, so she has a chance to research those. She's not a medical doctor, she has her PhD, obviously she's a pretty sharp person there at Mount Sinai, but to the extent that there's a medical question, she will, in all likelihood, go to the doctors and get that answered. The pad, the organic requires a pad. And, you know, in terms of studying this, it's, it's almost not a bad idea to have a pad if you went crumb rubber, if you went virgin rubber, if you went thermoplastic elastomers. The pad provides that extra protection. It's a little more expensive, or a lot more expensive depending on the pad, but in terms of safety and falling on it, it's, it's what we need to do. Some of the, the way it was presented last Tuesday, it showed the cost to remove the existing field and dispose of it properly, to regrade, and was saying you've got to add the pad and stuff like that. The information on this spreadsheet is as of 4:25 this afternoon, and the GeoFill, which would be my recommendation, or it's my recommendation, but obviously the board can't vote tonight, does include the pad, and it does include, with this proposal or with this configuration, 90% coconut, 10% cork. Does not include the, they're not tines, they're brushes that decompact it, and he, the gentleman, Lee DeFritus, said not to use the same equipment that you use to rake the crumb rubber or virgin rubber. It's just different thickness, so you need different equipment. So that would be an additional cost, not reflected there, between $2,700 and $3,300 for the, for the brush, the rake, whatever you want to call that. He did indicate last week and reinforce that today, that every two to three years, they need to come back and put in more of this infill, okay? Some of it blows away, washes away, and he said that's roughly about 10%. And so every two to three years, he says, anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000 is the cost to maintain or to do that to the fields. And I think I'll stop there, but see if there are any questions or any additional questions you think I should share with Dr. Evans. I know Dr. Howard is sending me some questions, shared some in person, that I need to ask Dr. Evans, so we'll get those answers, and if there's any more questions, try to get those answers also. MSDS sheets, that's been a question that, that has been asked. They, they will be delivered to us. I'm not making excuses for Mr. DeFritus, his daughter's a senior, and he was gone all last week, so yesterday and last night, he was, he gave me about 100, 120 pages worth of information, and he had the MSDS sheets as well.
Any, any questions, Maury?
So thank you very much, Dr. Evans, that's very important. And with regards, a couple things, with regards to the MSDS sheets, and I'm sure Dr. Evans will probably talk to this tomorrow, because this is directly from their, their information handout. They say that manufacturers are not required to disclose all the ingredients on the MSDS sheet, only those they deem to be potentially hazardous. These forms cannot be relied on as ingredients lists. However, they say we can ask the company and they provide that for us.
Thanks for reminding me on that, Dr. Howard, because when I spoke to Lee DeFritus today, he said the same thing. He said the MSDS, they're helpful, but they're incomplete, so he will also be sending us the ingredients list.
Okay, super. The other thing that's on this that you probably have seen is also from Mount Sinai. They say beware of greenwashing, in terms like organic, green, eco, do not guarantee safety, but if we get that ingredient sheet, then that will indicate that for us.
Yes.
The longevity of these fields, do they give you an estimate as far as, I know you said every two to three years you have to maintain it? Do you need to replace it at some point, or is that kind of in lieu replacement?
The synthetic turf field, they will issue an eight-year warranty for the field. They say that it lasts between 10 and 12, I think ours is at 10 or 11 right now. The, what, in terms of looking at the design of the field, I'll be recommending to the board a heavier-duty fiber so that it will last, be a little more durable and last a little bit longer, so hopefully we get the 10 to 12 years out of it. It's an eight-year warranty. The nice thing about the coconut infill is that whenever they do have to replace the carpet, so to speak, that infill, they've used it, and school districts have used it in applications where they use it almost like a top, topsoil went away for some of their ball fields, some of their other ball fields. The, under the pad, they guarantee that for two installations. So if, after, you know, 10 years from now, if the board chooses to go this route, the pad is warranted for another installation for another 10 years. They've had experience, not exactly with coconut, but with other types of infill where it's actually gone into a third application, but they won't warrant three applications.
And by putting it on the other ball fields, do I understand that therefore can be recycled?
Yes.
Okay. And in comparison to the Envirofill, or the other options up there, they're all kind of similar in terms of longevity?
The Envirofill, because it's a sand product, it's there, it's not going to wear out, and it doesn't compact as much. And some people, the Envirofill is mainly the infill for the Ladies' World Cup this past summer, and it's a, it's kind of a firmer surface, but, and so it never wears out.
Never insipid place?
The, the grass or the turf part will, but not the sand, so they can recycle the sand. And in places where they've installed that, they've actually taken all the sand off, pulled up the turf, the synthetic turf, put the synthetic turf down, and then put the sand back on top, and then the district has gotten a credit for the cost of the sand.
But the reason why we don't like that is because it doesn't compact as well?
Because it is a firmer surface, the Gmax is slightly higher, and it will all be sand. It's not the best surface for a football, football field, American football field. It is a good surface for a soccer field, a field hockey field. Some of the state universities of New York have begun to make a distinction with their fields, where the lacrosse field, soccer field, field hockey field is more of the Envirofill, the sand-based infill, whereas the football field is more of a GeoFill-type infill, or still the rubber products.
Okay. And as far as performance, you said Pleasantville was happy with their performance. Have we queried other areas like that?
I started with Pleasantville for the GeoFill, and then NIAC for the EPDM, and very pleased with theirs, but just because it's a rubber-based product, there's a lot of concerns about that, and so I think it's proven on our part to shy away from that and just say it would be organic. Subject to, we hear what Dr. Evans has to say, it's not greenwashing, I can't remember the term that was used.
Pleasantville.
Called it greenwashing.
Can I hook onto that question? How long has Pleasantville had their?
Two years.
Yep.
And the, Andy Gocioni has visited with their athletic director, and if any of the board members want to do a site visit or a walkthrough, I think Andy will have dates either tonight or tomorrow to send to the board members to see if you want to go look at their field.
Dr. Evans, does the Gmax rating change as the infill compacts? How often do we test that?
We test it annually, or we have been with this field. Do the same with the new field. Yeah, if it gets compacted, if we don't keep moisture on it, it really hasn't seemed to be a big problem. In the Southwest it would be a big problem, but here, it seems like we have plenty of moisture, sometimes too much. But, and then as long as we maintain it, where once or twice a year, we take the brushes over it to decompact it, the Gmax factor will be really good. And the best part about a lower Gmax factor is really attributed to the pad underneath because of the 109 number, and the 100, they actually, the, the subsurface after the pad, they just put this on concrete, where ours will be kind of a bravel, dirt base. So our Gmax numbers will be lower than that because we're not doing the test on top of concrete.
And the refilling it every two to three years will also help with the Gmax?
Yes, we've got to keep the proper level of infill in there, and we have to keep it decompacted, and as we maintain the field, our Gmax numbers will be very low for a long time. There, I read one research report where with the GeoFill, if, if you put a lot of the infill in just before winter, and then you put a lot of water on it and it freezes, then it's, it's, it takes away the good properties that we have. So the suggestion there is you don't replenish it to the spring, or you don't water it heavily in the fall.
It's a timing.
Or in the winter. So there's a timing issue there, because we, you know, you all have seen it, it's, it almost looks like dirt.
It feels like it.
It's real powder. You get the moisture in there and it can freeze. There have been instances where it's frozen.
The cost for the replacement, that's just going to come out of our annual budget, correct? We don't do anything special for taking that.
I asked if we could pro-rate it for the next four years of the referendum. I don't think it's possible.
The infill?
Yeah.
15,000 to 20,000. That's what we can handle. It was coming out of the general budget or out of the facilities budget. We don't have to go into the, the referendum budget.
And, yeah, short answer is yes, but I.
Or can we take?
It should, we should try to structure it in a way.
Are we allowed to take that money out now?
Where we recognize that.
Recognize that we needed them.
That the payments that go in for the facilities use, 50,000 a year, 75,000 a year, 100,000 a year, that we recognize that we're getting those funds to use the field. Pays for the lights, it also should be used to pay for the field, pays for, you know, the custodian to be there or whomever, but it will pay, it will help to offset the cost. Not a full million dollars or almost a million one.
No.
But it's enough to cover the.
I'm just talking about refilling.
Yes, yes.
Anything else more?
I'm sure someone will.
Alana?
All right, so I have a few questions, and just like we piggybacking on the last one, so I can continue on the same topic. So we currently spend some money on maintaining our turfs. That would be equivalent or more or less? Or do we spend anything on the current fields in terms of maintenance?
Well, we've not purchased any infill to put in there, and that's really where the cost will come from, is we will have to replace infill with the GeoFill.
Which they recommend even through crumb rubber fields, from what I've learned in the past.
Yes, yes.
If it was maintained correctly, it would have to be brushed as well as.
Yes.
Re-fill.
So there is, yes, there is a cost, it's not as high, but there is a cost, made for annual maintenance on crumb rubber, virgin rubber, etc.
And you feel comfortable that our income from using field usage would cover us for this?
If the historical charges or any indication, then the answer is yes.
My next question is, what is the status, and is it reflected in these costs of disposing of the current fields in the grass piece as well as the crumb rubber?
Yes, it's embedded in this. I think he had broken it out to where it was maybe 43,000 and 12,000, that's built into this.
And to be actually hold off premises, not put any on our.
Correct, yes.
Lots, okay. So total removal of the under layer as well as the top surface?
Yes, and in fact, they've already found a purchaser for our fields.
Good luck to them. So, okay, my next question is, there are other percentages of, rather than the 90-10% available through other suppliers.
Yes.
Who also charge differently. I couldn't help but notice that the prices we recorded from Shaw were on the high end compared to other suppliers, that obviously I'm not, you know, an architect or an engineer to know who's who and who's on the state list at this point, which I know is a preference, but are you looking at other suppliers of the same type of infill that you're recommending?
Exactly the 90-10 mix, that I don't, I can't say for certain, but yes, I have reached out to, most recently, a company named Lee's Greenplay, that's out on Long Island, Dominic, I can't pronounce the last name.
Doc C. Corapella, I believe, is the name. He was, I came across as a supplier of the same infill, who actually provides it to the turf companies at a lower cost if contracted, and I think that's something to find out, if it still would fall under the state list if we did that, but it would cut the cost tremendously.
The, the last bid that I looked at was Arlington and both bid on it, and it was 75 cents a pound, both of them bid at 75 cents a pound. So on the last bid, I saw, it's been within the last six months, it actually was the same price. Now, last year, Dominic, he was able to undercut the Shaw group, so, yeah, I think it's important that.
It's worth looking at.
This is what the board decides to see if we can get the lowest cost for the infill.
Right, if we can get the healthiest at a lower price, why not?
Yes.
And how much is the padding portion of that cost that's up on the screen? Because that's every two years, you're saying, not every year? Sorry, every two installments?
Replacements, the pad should last.
So if we replaced in eight to 10 years, it would be another eight to 10 years, right?
Yes, yes.
How much is it?
Forty-something thousand? I feel like.
No, they range from 95 to 125. I think that this is specced with the expensive one, the 125.
125,000 of that is the padding?
Yes.
So we would spend that every couple of installments?
Yes.
Okay. So it's about a fifth or a sixth of those lots, right, or something?
Yes, about a fifth.
Okay. For each one of them? So 100-something thousand for each other?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. These are all my questions.
Teresa?
Just a reminder too, when we asked last week, they don't really know if there's going to be any damage to the, I forget what they called it, the drainage portion of it around the field, so that could be, I don't know, it's going to be a high expense, but it could be an additional expense, which we won't know until they get in it and start removing things, so.
That's true, and they've had issues in the past with that area that does not drain well.
Right.
So there could be some issues with that. But with purchasing this off a contract, we set a cap, they can't go over it, and then we try to negotiate it down, so we can shift the liability to them. And they're going to shoot us the higher number when they specc it out, but we have to continually press that, that number down and allow them to, you know, take on that cost burden, not us.
Okay, thank you. I just have to go make sure, I'm interested in that tour, whatever, very interested to go see those fields.
Thank you. More comment? I think it's.
Just going to comment, I think it's, I think it's been a long time that this has been going on, before I came back on the board. I think it's going to have to go on the same page with this something and I think, I'm sure the public's looking forward to getting by this and getting it moved on and we're looking forward to getting the field. So thanks, I think we're going to work in conjunction altogether and get this done, move forward on this. Think, well, agreement, organic, I believe, is what we all need to go with and I want to thank you for your recommendation. I think we're leaning towards it anyway. I think one of the biggest things is, I think we all have different opinions up here and sometimes it comes out. We all think differently and maybe it can come a little contentious. But the reality is that one of us sitting up here that has a bad intention for our school district, our fields. We all want the best for our kids, for our community and for our teachers. So I just want to make sure we stress that because this is a, I saw the advice, just move forward and get this behind us. And I thank everybody out there for the comments and for the last couple of weeks, at least we got to hear what everybody's feeling about. Whether it was at the meeting or at AMP or, I mean, at the... I keep doing it, I don't know what I got it. Gary, who we were, everybody was talking about the fields and it was great hearing people talk. And I think going with the turf is critical because, number one, the usage of all. Number two, the organic, I think is great, so they're going in the right direction.
They haven't voted yet.
No, but I think it's just, I don't want my opinion, I know it's what you recommended from here.
Any other questions?
What did the coaches think when you said you queried them?
Their opinion, except for one. One said he'll go with either one. He said he's an old time guy, he likes the mud and wet and this and stuff. Might be, I guess who he is. But all the other ones told me, to a person, synthetic, no crumb rubber. All the coaches said that. And they also expressed a concern. Most of them that expressed it said, please don't have anything that has rubber attached to a virgin rubber or a crumb rubber. It has a negative connotation and they're concerned about it. But they implored me and us to go with the synthetic turf for consistent playing field, can play in all sorts of weather. And listening to everybody, I just really think the organic is the way to go.
I applaud them for putting the students' health first before performance, which is what that sounds like.
I think they're going to have good performance out of this, so.
And opposite performance as well. I really applaud them for that.
Okay, anybody else? No, again, and I would, you know, I couldn't say it any better than Clark with respect to the process, it's been a long process. A little bit more to go. We'll take a vote on this at the next board meeting, which is, what is that, April?
Well, next Tuesday is a budget workshop and then the following Tuesday, the nineteenth, will be the... Where you have to make a decision both on the budget and on the proposition language. And the proposition language, in discussing that with Mr. Fraunston, we have a draft that when it talks about the infill, I think it's important to say organic infill and then in parentheses, if it's coconut cork or if it's rice husk, cork or sand, whatever you all decide, I think it is important for the community to know that on the proposition, it's as specific as we can make it. So it's not going to, it may not, it's not going to say geofill because that's a commercial name. But it will be organic with as specific as we can be. And the, just to finalize it, the questions for Dr. Evans tomorrow, as soon as I get an answer, I'll share those out and then post them on the website so people can go there and, you know, those that have concerns about allergies to see what the best information is on that.
Thank you. Okay. All right, public participation, five point zero one. Public participation as to any school district business. Thirty-minute session, three minutes per person. Please step up to the podium. Name, school affiliation. Just comments to the president of the board. Do not discuss any, in particular, any person or student of Grand Central School District. If you would like, because it's not a question-and-answer type of format, if you want to leave your information, of which I probably have everybody's information in this room, but if you want to leave some information, we'll try to direct answers to you.
Hi, Melissa Gialardi. I have two children at Cherry Lane and one in Supren High School. I just want to say thank you. I'm a huge critic every time something doesn't go the way that I think it should go and tonight was a great meeting. You guys were respectful, everybody seems to work together and we finally have the information that I personally have been looking for. I feel very comfortable with everything that you've gone through. And I want to just, once again, just say thank you to the two doctors on the board. Last year, none of us even knew this could possibly be an issue. And the fact that the two of you were there on the Board of Ed this year and have expertise in this field stopped us from potentially making a decision that could have a bad impact on our community. And I just want to thank you for stepping up to the plate and making us all aware of this issue.
Hi, my name is Linda Byron. I have two in Cherry Lane, one in middle school, one in high school. I also would like to thank Dr. Adams for delving into this information. I'm sure you've been very consumed with lots of paper in the last week or so. And thank you so much for taking the time to go through it and really do what's best for our students. A special thanks to the doctors on the board. Thank you so much for helping us not make a really bad decision for our children. And thank you for the parents, especially, I'm not sure if she's still here, Linda. I have her name here somewhere. Angler Eisen has been... You have been an invaluable resource to us parents, as well as Melissa Gialardi. Thank you so much for all the information. We've helped those of us who couldn't make every single meeting keep us informed. And thank you for the rest of the board for choosing this particular info. Very pleased for my family and the rest of the families here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, see? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. We need to go back upstairs. Exactly, we're not done.